In yet?
He's just observing.
Is it really?
I know.
Well, how's he observing?
This time I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ask me in the last one.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome out everyone here this evening. We do have an agenda before us. Are there any corrections to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider the approval of the minutes of the meeting that was held on March 25th. The council does have the minutes before them. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
No corrections, just that I will not be able to vote currently as my computer is restarting.
You can do a voice vote.
Don't you love this?
Until
These crigs.
Until you're on, we'll go by voice vote.
Okay.
Are there any other corrections? If not, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jim, seconded by John to approve the minutes. As they have been approved by voice vote, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We'll move on then to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda, bring the items up on the screen. And they include the frontline warning system, the outdoor warning sirens contract with the city of Marshall, consider the approval of the off-site gambling permit for the Tracy Eagles Club, consider the approval of temporary liquor license for the craft beer and wine festival. The Aquatic Center, consider the approval of the assignment of the construction contracts to Contagity Group Incorporated. And secondly, allow the city's change order policy to be utilized for the Aquatic Center project. Consider the request of the Marshall Downtown Business Association for a spring parade on Saturday, April 26th. Consider the request for street closure of North Third Street and a portion of West Lyon Street for Juneteenth. The firm gas extension agreement with Great Plains Gas for Air Park East. The Lyon County Circle Construction Project, consider the resolution declaring the cost to be assessed and ordering the preparation of the proposed assessment. And then secondly, the resolution for the hearing on the proposed assessment. Also for the Legion Field Stormwater Improvement Project Phase Three, consider the authorization to advertise for bids. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Five.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent agenda?
I'm making a motion.
Motion by C. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote electronically. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. Amanda, we're glad you're back with us, so. The agenda item number, number five was the items related to the Aquatic Center. Jim?
The only thing I want to bring, not bring up is just to go over what the change order policy is so the public understands. You know, just to say it out there, there's a lot of people that don't understand the policy that we created. And this way, we state to them so they know what the policy is.
Sharon, do you want to give a brief overview?
Yeah, and please add in, I wasn't here during the Red Baron contract where we were under a construction manager. But our knowledge after that particular project and then other projects that followed that, every single change order came forward to the council for approval, whether up or down, no matter what the value was. And what occurred specifically was with Red Baron was time delays, construction delays, costs that got added. Moving forward after Red Baron, we did have that occur on some particular street projects as well. And there was discussion about how we could make this more efficient and possibly save money by keeping projects moving forward. So in February of 2019, the city council did adopt a change order policy, which said in effect, if you're within the contingency of the, of the project budget, you would not have to come back to council for approval, only when you exceeded project contingency plus $25,000. If it's contingency and within 20 and plus $25,000, city administrator can approve. Goes over that contingency and $25,000, then it comes back to council. So that was adopted in February of 2019. For this particular project, it was advised, we talked to the staff and to our city attorney about. Again, we're faced with multiple contracts, how would we approach this? And we would follow this policy by using the contingency budget, and I have that up here if you wanted to know that amount, for the budget that was proposed at a, at a prior meeting. So hopefully that answers your question. Maybe I'll add one other really quick thing. Once construction starts, we're probably going to have reviews of the construction project. Any questions that may come up, we'll probably try to set up a schedule for the Aquatic Center Committee to kind of review progress and any construction issues that may come up if we need advice in council of, of council.
Which would be similar to the process that worked very well for the City Hall.
Yeah, correct.
So no, and I just want that explanation to the public. No, I agree with this because you can't have construction delays on a project like that. Because you can't sit for two, we can't stop a guy from digging the project and sit for two weeks. So no, I agree with it. I just want to explain, so the public hears what that is. And I think we need to reiterate because you bring up Red Baron. Red Baron did not run over budget from what I understand.
That's right.
And that was a misconception with all those change orders that it ran over budget. It did not. Just like City Hall did not run over budget. With that being said, I will approve and make a motion to approve number five.
I'll second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Amanda to approve both items under agenda item number five. That would be the assignment of the construction contracts to Contagity and allow the city's change order policy to be utilized for the Aquatic Center project. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting. And the motion does pass. Agenda item number 12, the municipal state aid review to consider a resolution that would be revoked to municipal state aid streets. And then secondly, a resolution that would establish municipal state aid streets. So taking some off, adding some others on. Jason Anderson, city engineer, director of public works, you can provide a more thorough explanation, so.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Included in the packet, you should have a map. That's our state aid network in map form. All the red routes are state aid routes on our system. We're allocated a certain amount of mileage to put onto the state aid system. We did, in, back in 2022, we did a pretty sophisticated, wide-ranging changes to our system. One piece that's always been hanging out there, that yellow line on the far side, it's a future industrial road, airport industrial road that at one point in time must have been in part of the city's vision. The reason we left it on the system back in 2022 was that we thought we had to keep it in order to keep the bridge out to Air Park East on our system. Because every stated route has to terminate at another stated route or state highway or county highway to maintain continuity in the network. So we've since learned that we can revoke that route because the bridge and that route, that .09 miles terminates at an airport. And that meets the criteria by terminating in airport or a seaport as well. So we're proposing to remove that mileage and then allocate Tiger Drive and Boyer Drive to the stated network. By making these changes, we have only 0.01 miles remaining in our budgeted miles, so we're pretty fully allocated. By being more allocated, we'll bring in more money into the program every year. We get 50% of our money and funding through population and 50% based on what is called needs. And the needs are based on traffic on the road. So if imaginary route with no traffic gets less money than a route with traffic. So we would recommend to move forward with these changes. Also included a few pieces of information in the packet about how much money the program brings in every year. PIT committee heard this on March 25th and unanimously voted to move it forward. I can answer any questions if we have them.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Any questions? We'll handle this in two separate motions. First, I would entertain a motion on the replication of the streets. Motion by John, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And close the voting. And the motion does pass. And then the second action would be the resolution that would establish the municipal state aid streets.
So moved.
Motion by C. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number 13. This is the chip sealing on various city streets. The request is to consider the authorization to advertise for bids. Once again, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, in the packet, we have a map to visualize the routes that city staff would propose to chip seal this year. This is our annual project. We've got $165,000 included in the street department budget for this work. To complete the streets that are shown on the map and listed by name in the memo would cost around $154,000 by our estimate. The purpose of the chip seal program is to help prolong the life of our bituminous street system. By covering the blacktop, you're protecting the surface from oxidation. Blacktop over time gets more brittle, and as it gets more brittle, it begins to crack, and then it starts to fall apart. By providing this cover, you slow that process. PIT committee did hear this item as well on March 25th. They did recommend to pause the chip seal program and not move, move forward this year. Staff would recommend that we do continue with the program, seeing how it's in the budget. But the recommendation from PIT is not to. So you've got that to consider, I guess, in our decision-making here. And I can answer any questions if we have them.
Okay, thank you, Jason. We'll open up for any questions or input.
Well, I'll give input from the PIT committee. It's not that the PIT committee opposed us. It's just that we're looking at budgetary issues and upcoming, the upcoming budget, and we think this is a good year to pause it because our budget is still uncertain for this year because no fault of the city, no fault of employees, that we haven't solidified that contract yet. And going forward, it's just unknown of what finances are going to be. So we just thought it'd be a good idea not to spend the money this year. I personally, now this is me personally, I oppose, I don't think it's worth the money. But that is not the opinion of the PIT committee. They pause it because of budgetary issues. I always oppose it because I don't think it's worth the money.
Other, other input?
What was the vote? Like how many against and how many?
Zero, is, all, unanimous vote.
Okay.
Okay. Any other input?
I guess my only concern is just the game of kicking the can down the road, but.
The, Jason, you may want to comment, this would allow, if this, if the action on pausing would prevail, it would allow the consideration of the future years and probably focusing on the more recently overlaid streets, which has been the past policy.
I'm sure. I think if I'm picking up what you're saying, we, we do try to prioritize new pavements with the chip seal, new overlays or new reconstructs, because the current guidance out there through research is that you protect the pavement early. The old method was to wait for five to seven years before you apply the chip seal. The new thought process that's supported by data is you do it early and often to prevent the oxidation from occurring. There's also other products and processes out there that we're continually monitoring. There's really good study going on right now on other types of rejuvenators, they call them. They're different treatments that soak into the pavement and help, help it remain flexible. Some really promising stuff. I know that some council people do not like the chip seals. They don't like the rocks. They don't like the debris, the rough surface. Some of these other products that we're watching would not have any of that and probably still give us a similar result. So we are patiently watching that. There's another year or two where the data comes out, we'll feel maybe a little better about it. There are some cities in Minnesota using one product in particular that we like. And we're, we're continuing to learn more.
So there are opportunities in the future.
There are opportunities in the future.
And of course, the, the goal that we all have is to maintain a, you know, the 80-plus good road miles in good condition, so.
Yes, Mayor, we have 80 miles of local streets on our network. Costs a lot of money to maintain. If you look at the, what we're typically doing right now with the mill and overlay program, we're under two miles, I think, of mill and overlay every year. If a street lasts 20 years, simple math says you should be doing at least four miles of resurfacing. We're less than half of that. If that's going to be the case, then you have to do more pavement management, like we are doing with crack sealing with the street department. That's great work that helps. The chip seal, patching, we just got to be more active.
Any further questions for Jason? If not, you have both the recommendation from staff as well as the recommendation from Public Improvement and Transportation Committee. What are the wishes of the council?
Well, I'll make a motion that we do not do the chip sealing this year.
Motion by Jim, is there a second to that motion?
Sorry, I don't feel comfortable making a second.
I have to ask this three times. Is there a second to the motion? Is there a second to the motion? That motion dies for a lack of a second, I would entertain an alternate motion.
I'd make a motion that we authorize bids for chip sealing project on the city streets listed.
Motion by Amanda, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by C. Discussion on the motion?
I guess mostly just because we're, we need to maintain our streets. It's an expectation of the city, and it is on the, in the budget currently, so.
That was an argument I made on the PIT committee. I'm, I'm on the fence on this. I like to trust the city staff and their knowledge. And I also know the prices never go down. As we, if we put down, put these projects forward, we're not, probably not going to see the price come down in a year or two.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on the motion. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the next agenda item, which is agenda item number 14. Consider the resolution of worrying the sale of general obligation bonds and the resolution ordering the sale of general obligation sales tax revenue bonds. I'm going to call on EJ Moberg, Director of Administrative Services, to go through the recommendations and the outcome of the bids that occurred earlier today. EJ?
Thank you. This morning at 10 o'clock, we did have our sale of bonds, is when that sale closed. We did get one bid for each our 2025A and our 2025B bonds. The 2025A bonds would be our, our typical yearly bonding for, in this case, it's the street project for the aerial truck purchase, as well as then the surface water project. That's in our 2025A. Our 2025B issuance relates to the Aquatic Center construction. We did get, like I said, just one, one bid from each. We'll kind of go through those now. Michaela Hewitt from Baker Tilly is joining us via Zoom. And if she's ready, I'll, I'll let her take the first slide that we're going to show up on a presentation here. This is just the summary page, you can go to the next one. We'll let Michaela go, if you're ready, Michaela.
I am. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As EJ said, you know, we're, I guess I'll maybe kick off our presentation that, and we'll get into the bid results. But you did hear correctly, we've received one bid for each of the two issues. Normally, we would expect to receive multiple bids. But at the same point, if we receive one bid that's, that's favorable for the project financing, then that's essentially what we need. There's a lot of, there is a lot of volatility in the market over the course of the last few days, and that reflected both the, the market and the actual bids the city received, as well as the interest rates. There was, there was considerable review on, on the timing of proceeding with the issue. But again, I think as you'll see with the results, the city had positive results with the bid that was, the bids that were received. And this first slide is just showing the, the historic trend on interest rates. And we'll see right now, you know, we're back in the, and even as of this week, there's a significant jump. Thirty to basis, thirty to fifty basis points over what we saw last week. So we're in a little bit of a volatile market with some, with some uncertainty. So maybe with that, we'll go to the next slide.
Okay, we'll move back to me on this one. So again, the 2025A series bonds relate to the equipment purchase, the aerial truck, the street reconstruction project this year. And then as well as that surface water utility project. These are 10-year bonds. When we started the process, we were looking at, at par value of just under $4 million. We did, if you remember, knock that number down to just over 2.8 million when we, when we brought forward the resolution in early March, on March 11th. We were at that point planning on $2,805,000. At that point, the estimate from Baker Tilly was that we were looking at about a 3.89, 8% interest rate. And then as of last week, they did another run as we get close. At that time, as of last week, we were just under 3.5% interest rate. And then today, their one bid was from Robert W. Baird &amp; Company Incorporated, and it was for 3.774. So it's about 30 basis points higher than what we would have expected based on last year's estimate. But it is under kind of what we were initially planning. So it's still a, a good bid, even though it was an only bid situation. We're not, I don't feel we're getting gouged. It is just the, the factor of the volatile market with, you know, anywhere from 30 to 50 basis point swings on a given day for that. So again, it did come in under what, what was expected on some of those initial runs. They did offer a, a premium with this. So we're looking at being able to reduce the, the par amount of the bond. So instead of the $2,805, the par value of the bonds that we'll pay back is the $2,590,000 based on this bid.
So when you, when you say this was, when we started this project, you're at 3.2, whatever that number was?
3.898.
No, back in February of, when we started, the previous slide.
Okay.
February 26th, or no, 3.497. When we started this project, what was the original estimate? When we ordered the fire truck, we're saying.
Oh, for the fire truck? Like you're talking two and a half years ago? Or are you talking?
Yeah, I'm just, the interest rates have gone up. How's that built into the budget? You increased it?
So the interest rates, we were, when, when we were talking to lower the amount of projects, because someone weren't quite ready for coming forward, we were going by the fact that we were going to be paying the 3.890.
Okay, it was built into the higher.
That was built into that number for when we were calculating for what the share of the levy impact would be.
That's what I was trying to, how is it affecting levy? That's what I was trying to.
So in this case, it's, it slides under that amount?
So because the cost of the interest, we're getting less product and paying more interest per se?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
But overall, it fell under our plan. Sorry, go ahead, Michaela.
Yep.
Michaela, you were adding something?
Yeah, hope you didn't hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I was just going to add the, the interest rate of the 3.8. That was what was in the pre-sale summary, and when we're leading up to the divs, we always add some bait. A good estimate of the interest.
You're cutting out, Michaela.
Michaela, you're cutting out. I think what she's, I think the gist of what Michaela is saying is that, that the 3.898 was what we used for the estimates for the projects throughout. The update that was from last week was something I wasn't even made aware of until yesterday. So it's, it's not something that we were just necessarily planning on. Would have been great to, to recognize or realize those savings, yes. Does it stop the project? No. I don't, I don't believe it should. That's up to you guys. But the 3.778 is still under what we had initially used for planning the project, to the point that we're able to, again, reduce the, the par value of the, the bonds.
Do you want to provide just a little further explanation on the reduction in the par value reduces the total amount that you're, of the principal that?
That'll be the principal amount ultimately that we pay off over the next 10 years is the $2,590,000. So it's down from the $2,805 that we were planning on it being. So we're able to take that money and, and move it right towards this. All right, and then on the 2025B bonds, which are the sales tax revenue bonds for the Aquatic Center. Those are a 20-year term. Again, and as of February, the end of February, we're looking at 4.229. Again, just with some market adjustments, last week, that estimate was down to 4.212. Again, we just had one bidder. Again, it was W., Robert W. Baird Incorporated and Company Incorporated. The bid result was for 4.336. In this case, we already have the $18,370,000 going towards the project, which is the most we're authorized by what we had our referendum on, as well as by the legislative piece. We were planning to, we, we still plan to capitalize some interest as part of that, which we were allowed to do as part of that. So if you remember on that one, back when we brought that forward in March, we were looking at $20,100,000 as the principal, or the par value of these bonds, excuse me, the par value, $20,100,000. After that time, after that was approved on March 11th, on March 13th, I contacted Baker Tilly because we kind of looked back at what our sales tax collections have been, because we have an existing sales tax to pay off some existing debt at the Red Baron Arena and the Merritt Center. And with collections, I thought we could put more, we'll have more money available. We won't need all of next year's collections to go towards that like we initially thought. So we talked to Michaela about getting a run for $19,670,000, put it under a $20 million issuance already. Based on the results today, by using some of the, the premium to go towards that capitalized interest piece, because we're, we're, we still have to, we still owe interest every year. But it's capitalized interest from the standpoint of it's part of the bond, because we aren't going to have the monies available. Because we need to collect the monies in '25 and most of '26 to pay off existing debt, not to save towards, to towards the new debt. Does that make sense? So, but because we're going to be able to take some of the premium to do that, we're able to lower the par value of these bonds to $19,285,000 because of that premium bid. Then that puts our actual true interest cost of this at 4.344% is what that would work out to. Are there questions on that? Does that make sense as to how that works with the premium itself?
Thank you, EJ, for.
Michaela's got more. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure that would make sense before we moved on.
Any question for EJ? Okay. Go ahead.
Michaela, are you back on?
Just a second, she got kicked off.
I will start then while she's getting back on.
She's back.
Okay. Michaela, we were just about to start going through the, summarizing the ratings report. Did you, are you back? That you want to take that?
Yes, yep, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. So as, as part of the process, to lead up to today is the, a call with the city's rating agency, S&amp;P. That, following that call and their review, they were able, or they provided on the long-term rating, a double A and stable outlook for both the 2025A and 2025B bonds, as well as affirming the long-term rating of double A and stable for the city's outstanding or existing issues. So that was a positive, positive rating outcome, yeah, especially with the affirmed double A status. yeah, especially with the affirmed double A status as well as a stable outlook. And really, what, what does that bond rating mean? It measures the city's overall financial strength and ability to make the payments on the debt service in a timely fashion. What they're looking at is what is the likelihood of a default. The higher the rating, the less likely to default and ability to make the payments. And of course, the inverse is true. The, and, and what the end of the day is, the lower the inch, the, sorry, the higher the rating, the lower the interest rate that we'll see on the, the city's bond issues. Here's just a chart showing where the double A fits in. There's two notches that are up with triple A being the highest. So we've got double A, and then just above that would be double A plus, and then triple A. So some of the overview of the, the S&amp;P review of the rating, so it reflects the city's strong operating performance and healthy fund balance. There is a partial offset of those strengths with the city's debt burden. That's relative to the size of your tax base, and then the general weaker local incomes as compared to the national average. The city's financial performance is mixed. They're reflecting some small deficits and surpluses over the past four years. However, fiscal year 2024 reflected a surplus attributed to higher-than-anticipated investment earnings, as well as the general fund revenues consisting of 41% of taxes and intergovernmental revenues of 30%. The city did adopt a balanced budget for fiscal year 2025 that included levy increase that accounted for the increasing expenditures due to both health insurance personnel costs. But the budgets are in line with the city's projections, and that's one of the, the considerations that is made with the review. The operating performance shows an available fund balance of 49%, and with no planned drawdowns, reserves would be able to maintain at least five months of the operating expenditures. These are some just additional comments that they had. I think generally, you know, location, per capita outcome, or excuse me, per capita economic output metrics in line with the national average. The city has healthy reserve and liquidity position. The management policies and practices are strong and include quarterly budget updates, capital plan that's annually updated, and investment policy with monthly reports, as well as a formal reserve policy, maintaining the special revenue fund with five months of the following year's budgeted expenditures. And lastly, one of the, oops, sorry. One of the last considerations is the implemented policies and practices, which leads to strong financial performance, as well as management of the city finances. So the last piece, they always provide sort of the, the what-ifs. What could we do? Or what could be possible outcomes for a downside or upside scenario, as well as a downside scenario? Possible upside would be if the economic indicators, primarily the local, from a local level, were to improve. And if the city, I know we're working on some additional financial policies and practices, and that really goes to bolstering and supporting the strong financial management that the city is already experiencing. Possible downside, you know, this is generally consistent with what we hear, is that if the city's finances were to become imbalanced, not balanced budget, more-than-expected expenditures, and like you see if there's a, a significant deterioration of the reserves that go below what the fund balance policy and other financial policies of the city would, would require. So I think all in all, it was a positive, a positive outlook by affirming the rating and maintaining that for both the existing as well as the new issues. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you, Michaela. Any, any questions for either Michaela or for EJ? Sharon?
I just want to add a comment on bond rating. I know at previous meeting, I sent you a spreadsheet kind of comparing us with other cities. One of those line items is bond ratings. And I think we had about 16 total cities we are comparing with, and we are better than about 10 of them. So we've got strong bond ratings. I know Michaela hit all the points, but we compare very well. So I thought I'd add that.
Thank you. Any other piece of input or questions? If not, the action before us, and there's two actions, would be the, the resolutions on both of the, of the issues. I would entertain a motion first on the resolution that would award the sale of the general obligation bonds. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jim.
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. And then the second action would be the resolution awarding the sale of the general obligation sales tax revenue bonds.
I'll make motion.
Second.
Motion by C, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And that motion does pass. Just one additional comment on this, and maybe others have comments, but a great deal of, of thanks goes to not only Michaela, our financial consultant, but also to EJ Moberg for some very thorough work on really doing the best that could be done on these issues for the city. So we have a, a great finance team, and we're, and the city benefits greatly from that. So, thank you. If not, if there's no other comments, we'll move on then to agenda item number 15. This is to consider appointments to various boards and commissions earlier this evening. The council did meet in special session and based on, and that, that special session interviewed candidates for two different boards and commissions, and actually three. So based on, on those interviews, I would recommend that Lee Sorum be appointed to a vacant term on the Airport Commission that will expire May 31st, 2027, that Josh Sholton and be appointed to a vacant term on the Community Services Advisory Board that will expire on February 28th, 2026, and Ryan Anthony be appointed to a term on the Community Services Advisory Board for a term that will expire February 28th, 2028, and that Jana Riley be appointed to a term on the Public Housing Commission that will expire on May 31st, 2027. I'd offer that as a recommendation to the council and, and entertain a motion to affirm.
Bob, can we separate out the public housing ones after abstaining from that vote?
Yes, we can.
Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion on the commissions other than the Public Housing Commission that I went through. That would be the Airport and Community Services.
Make motion.
Motion by C, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. And then the Public Housing Commission appointment.
So move.
Motion by John, seconded by Amanda. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we will close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll note the one abstention. We'll move then to agenda item number 16, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Amanda?
Yeah. So I have the Community Services Advisory Board, and these are some dates that you guys should note. So we have the early pool pass that opened today. We have the summer brochure sneak peek, which is the week of April 21st, which is significantly earlier than in years past, which I think people will really like. We have swimming lesson registration, and that is Monday, April 28th at noon. And then we have all registration going to be open on April 30th at noon. That's it.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Amanda?
My boards haven't met yet.
The, and the Southwest Regional Development Commission does meet on Thursday. I'll be unable to be at that meeting because we have testimony at the Tax Committee also on Thursday. So, John?
My boards didn't meet.
C?
CVB met. We met at the Charming Lyon County Museum. Hotels have been a bit slow on weeknights. We were told that the YMCA did purchase their indoor equipment, and we had seven community support grants. So that means there's going to be a lot of activities happening this summer here, really exciting. And then DEI Commission, the city staff had, did some research on, is it Probio?
Probio.
Probio Translation Services, and the committee has suggested identifying five top languages that are in need here. And then the Juneteenth Committee, their main event has been confirmed, and you all just voted to close down North Third Street and part of Lyon Street for, West Lyon Street for the event. So we're really excited about it. That's all I have.
Great. Jim?
I have not, mine have not met.
We will move then to council member individual. I'm Mr. Jim.
You know, since I saw a fire truck go by, and I see Quentin sitting here, and I know I asked you a couple, a week ago or so, but how's our, since we can pay for our new fire truck now, how is our new fire truck coming? I just thought, because I saw one of your fire trucks, or one of our fire trucks go by, actually.
I'd yell from the back, but I don't want the mayor to yell at me to come to the podium. So.
You can adjust height on that.
Does the height go up and down on this?
There's a button.
There's a button. Okay. Anyway, I'm glad you asked. The aerial is near completion. It was scheduled to, at the beginning of this month, to go and do a final inspection and walkthrough. However, that's been delayed just from normal work type of thing. So the committee is scheduled to head to Wyoming, Minnesota, to the Rosenbauer plant on the 26th, do a final inspection. We'll identify if there's any issues with it. Just use it, pump with it, throw the aerial up, see how that goes. And then depending if there's any work that needs to be completed after that, it'll be ready for delivery hopefully. But they might not deliver it until we pay for it until May 8th, but we'll work on that.
And I also heard that you guys did such a great job developing, another city copied our fire truck.
Yes, we do have some friends within the state, which is good. So they did copy ours. The city of Hibbing has placed their order for the same basically aerial truck that we have designed. So it was a pretty cool thing that we got to participate in with them. This will be the first of its kind for this city. As we discussed here prior, that it is a mid-mounted fire truck or aerial truck. So the platform, instead of being on the back with the bucket hanging out the front, the platform is now in the middle of the truck, and the basket hangs out the back. And we did that because we're not going to raise the lintels in the fire station, so we got to lower the truck down without sacrificing the size of the aerial that can deploy. So that's interesting. And the other side of it is all the electronics in it. We were told one thing, and then the engineers came back after the fact and said, we can't do that. So in the benefit of the city of Marshall taxpayers, we received an upgrade of about $18,000 worth of electrical valves to be used. Normally, it's cables and pulleys and such within that open the valves up. So this is the first of its kind that we'll have for that. So that'll be interesting for it, pushing a button and the valve opens electronically.
And then once it is delivered, there's a fair amount of training that your staff will have to go through.
As part of the bid process, it was a three, excuse me, they, they come down for three days. So we are working through scheduling our staff to be available one of those three days at least for a four-hour training session with the, with the manufacturer. They will come and do that. We have secured a spot at the Merritt Center inside to park it, and the truck captain and lieutenant, along with their committee that's going to be working on it, will basically take our truck that we have now. They'll park it alongside of it. We've planned as much as we can without having it here for places that we want the equipment to be until we actually get it put in there. The plan sounds phenomenal. We'll see how it works once it gets there. But we will see a significant increase in the amount of space that we have. And I know the staff will be very happy because they are tired of crawling over the fan to get to the seat. So that will be very good and welcome thing for them.
Thank you, Quentin. Any, any other questions? The songs are being standing here?
Here, I'll put this right back down.
Thank you.
Nope, that's, that's all I have tonight.
C?
Nothing.
John?
Nothing.
Amanda?
Nothing.
And Amanda?
Nothing.
We will move then to staff reports. Sharon?
Just in case anybody's wondering what staff are doing, admin briefs in the packet. I'll point out a couple things. City Attorney had a page and a half of work this past month. And if you notice too, the rental code inspection, there's a line item in there about that. We're less than 50 units that need to be registered. So made a lot of progress on that since the beginning of the year. And then we also did include strategic plan update, and then another listing of 2025 projects, which is kind of in the admin brief, but it puts it in a Excel spreadsheet in case you wanted to know where we're at with certain projects. So that's all I had. Mr. Mayor?
Any questions for Sharon? If not, Jason?
Thank you. Just wanted to let the council know that there's an open house next week on April 16th for the College Drive Reconstruction Project. Mid-dawg will be there, city staff will be there. Starts at 2:30 for businesses and 4 o'clock for just general public, 4 to 5:30 for general public. So stop out if you have time, or encourage anybody else who has questions to stop out. I think they'll also be discussing some bridge projects that they're doing this summer in our area. So that's all I have.
And there's upcoming groundbreaking on Friday, May 2nd, so.
Yep, that's correct.
Very good. City Attorney Pam Whitmore?
Nothing. Thank you.
The, we'll move on then to agenda item number 21. This is to consider going into closed session for attorney-client discussion regarding a matter with the court file 42-CV-AD-21-7. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session for that purpose.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jim. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by C. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion does pass. We will go into closed session.